So this is a special meeting of the Executive Committee of the Plan Commission and as well as the County Commissioner. So it's a joint meeting. So I will go ahead and call the role of the meeting as being recorded for anyone that is online or wishes to access this at another time. So I'll start with commissioners. Julie Thomas here. And again, then here, Lee Jones here. Okay, so we have all three commissioners in a corner and then I will go back through the Executive Committee of the Plan Commission, which there is one overlap member with commissioners. So Julie Thomas.
Here.
Jeff Morris.
Here.
Margaret Clemens.
Here.
Cheryl Munson.
Here.
Okay, and so we do have enough members in person and quorum. So today's topic is to discuss House Bill 1108, which is on its way to be scheduled in the Senate. And so if anyone wants to present an agenda, I do have some notes, but I just wanted to kind of see what the discussion topics we want to cover today will be.
Great. I think one of the first things we have to do is make it clear that the public is obviously here and welcome to attend, but we're not going to take public comment today. Want to make that clear. Is everybody, everybody's okay with that? Yes, okay. All right. So. I think, I think the question before us is if there are compromises or revisions that we've, anybody would like to propose and we can get that hopefully to the bill. Well, at least to the people who have the bill. Not sure that it's going to get in the bill. So I think that may be a good place to start and I think you outlined a few of them and maybe we could start there.
Yes, I'd be happy to. So yes, we did receive reach out from some of the folks that were supportive of the bill. And so their request was if we had any amendments, but before we propose any kind of amendment to this bill because it will impact a local law passed by the commissioners. We wanted to convene a group here to see if there were, if there was a consensus for the types of amendments that we might want to see in, in that bill. So I will include just some information that I provided in, I think I provided in the testimony, but also just in just putting some notes together for this bill. So one discussion point could be questioning the 25% slope threshold. I listened to the House meeting where Representative Paul was presenting and he referenced the 2007 Indiana Stormwater Quality Manual. And it says 15% slope is of concern. And then it says 25% slope should be avoided altogether. So he stated that 25% was chosen because it's stated as avoided altogether. During his own testimony and other information from other folks that came and spoke, there was justification for, I believe, 18% slope. Even he said 19% slope, but changed that to 20% when he was testifying in front of the House for a vote. So I haven't heard anything about 20 to 25% slope. And so if there were to be an amendment, I don't know that anyone has provided support up to 25% slope. So there was a concern or request to ask that to be lowered.
And I did, I have not gone back and watched what was on the House floor, but I understand that Matt Pierce gave a pretty strong response. Can somebody share with me what Munson?
Yes, I just listened to it. So Matt's testimony was, he kind of asked Representative Paul directly, is this only for, the beginning of the bill only for Lake Monroe? Or are there other jurisdictions that this bill would address? And he stated to his knowledge, no. So yes, and I reached out to the Indiana APA and there is somebody from New Albany who says that they have a regulation of 12% slope or greater and that they would be taking a look into the bill. So New Albany, Indiana. And then Moresburg stated that they were in the process of adopting an ordinance that regulates slopes 20% or steeper. So there were two jurisdictions on that Indiana forum who happened to receive notification of my posting that responded.
That's City of Bloomington.
Yes, City of Bloomington also, yes. And I reached out to their staff and they have a lobbyist that was supposed to be engaged and involved.
Okay. Jeff, what is City of Bloomington? Is it also 15 or 12% or what is it?
You would know.
I don't know.
Do you remember? I'm, I, that most is 15, but it more than less.
I don't think it's greater than 15.
12.
Yeah, yeah. I think the question I would have is there a way to explain the fiscal impact of 1% of slope change, 2% of slope change? In other words, clearly there would be, I think there would probably be an exponential increase of costs in stormwater management as you go up in the law more slow. But is there some way to, I mean, that is, I, I know I'm asking a tough one. Is there some way to quantify? Because I think other local governments should be aware of the costs that they're going to be incurred.
Yes. That's a very big question.
Legislative Services came out and said there will be a fiscal impact to local government.
Right, but my question is can we?
But I understand, what will that be?
But my, my question is, does it change if it's 18% versus 20, right?
Yeah, what is that number? Yeah, I would have to consult with, you know, other accountable and, and yes, other folks to talk about exactly what changes with, as the percent slope increases.
Yeah.
Now I'm thinking, you know, retaining walls, drain, you know, putting perimeter drains around buildings. You know, some of the road toward the local practices is not just, you know, one real slope change. So we're going to be looking at, you know, other slope drains and other things to get the water away from your worksite. It will be heavily site dependent. But it does get more complex as deeper the slope is. And then I'm also thinking of downstream water quality impacts and how we can quantify that. I mean, obviously Lake Monroe will still be protected, but everything else in the county still drains to a waterway. You know, potentially people downstream using that for drinking water, but how do we quantify the, the increase in pollutants or sediment from just these activities?
Yeah, I know, it's a tough question. There's not, you know, there's not some, some standard rule or principle out there for stormwater that says for every percent of slope, your costs are going to be, you know, two times greater or, you know, I, I didn't think there was, but I thought I'd ask in case there was.
But it's all oil dependent too, the fact that.
Yeah, absolutely. So that drop, the drainage board has stated that in general, the bedrock is going to be stable in the sense that they're not going to have greater land size and things like that. But yeah, heavily soil dependent. The soils themselves are not suitable for building. If you look at the NRCS web soil survey, if you look at areas of the county, it is almost 100% severely limited or very limited for building, constructing residential homes, including homes with basements.
Yeah, yeah. So one of the things that I know we talked about was in the bill, there's language that basically says that it is for a watershed area and a drinking water source. And I think one of the easiest things we could do is something that you put in that original email, Jackie, which was changing the "and" to "or". Because then we can protect other potential water sources, right?
So that would be this section here that the Department of Natural Resources has determined to be the watershed area of a reservoir or is a drink, a source of drinking water for a municipality. Because by saying "and" we're then requiring the Department of Natural Resources to update a map. I wasn't able to find a watershed area for Lake Monroe.
Well, I can, I can create that, but in general, the locations of drinking water reservoirs is not something that the state easily shares because of departmental security.
Okay. Also, it's difficult to even find.
Yeah, like I know people who have that information. It's just not something that is available.
Right, okay.
And by changing it to "or", we could potentially protect Griffey as well.
Lake Lemon especially has incredible issues with sanitation.
Yeah.
Up there, no, because they're paying for all the dredging.
Yeah.
But also I'm thinking of wellhead protection areas and other parts of the state.
Right, right.
So actually by changing this "or", you think that number one would actually open up protection to other areas of lemon?
Any reservoir that's not a drinking water source, but still a reservoir is worth protecting.
Okay, yeah. Because that's the emergency backup, right?
I guess one of the questions on that first sentence there is the Department of Natural Resources. Is there an official determination or watershed or?
I, I looked at the map and, and maybe I'm, I have the wrong map, but it, it only shows the reservoir of Lake Monroe.
Yeah.
So it sounds like they're going to be requesting DNR to do some determination. I mean, USGS and NRCS are the ones who do the watershed data layers.
Do we need to change, ask to change reservoir to a different word? Is, would that, would that address it?
Well, I guess my, my concern was, was if the DNR is supposed to make this determination, is that something that they have done or do? As opposed to, as determined from a USGS map or something like that?
That's why it's confusing why DNR is involved. I mean, they manage the land around Lake Monroe, but they don't own it. Like, yeah, um, it's just really confusing.
So we don't even know that it exists. Yeah, and, and maybe that, maybe that word reservoir is going to be a problem too. That's, that's a very specific thing versus a lake or other body of, large body of water, right?
If, if Representative Paul's intent is basically to apply this to Lake Monroe and the DNR has designated Lake Monroe as a reservoir watershed area, then that would make sense for his purposes because he, he can determine it applies to Lake Monroe.
Yeah, but from my perspective, I see, I mean, every reservoir has a watershed. Like anywhere you are, that's the whole education piece that we do about stormwater and watersheds is that you can't just pick and choose where, what's a watershed and what isn't. Every single square foot of land is located within the watershed of some water body or sinkhole. So it's just strange that he's putting in that DNR has to make a determination on what is within the watershed of a reservoir.
And also we're, don't we have like an underground river or two here? So the stuff goes into that sinkhole, goes on and that, that eventually feeds into a reservoir. How do you catch that?
Right.
How, how do you define that?
I mean, West Side Bloomington is a perfect example. It goes into sinking creek underground from Southern Springs Nature Park and goes into the old reservoir that they initially built a long time ago. Perfect reason to capture the West Side Bloomington and see more stringent regulations.
Griffey's not on that. This was the only map I was able to find, which is why I was worried that it's very limited and that's why.
And that's the only.
It jives with Representative Paul's.
Well, but it says reservoirs in blue, right?
Reservoir recreation site.
Okay. Oh, okay, I see, okay.
So you don't think they actually have a published map anywhere? So how would we be able to administer this?
Okay. Yeah, good question.
Cheryl, would you have your hand raised?
I, I do have had my hand raised about the watershed matter. And there is a definition for the state and it is through IDIM because they define the watersheds and help local entities with their management plans. And so IDIM is the agency that to look to, to get the watershed boundaries. They are well established and know.
But this, the bill specifically references DNR.
I know.
He made it. And, and reservoir. I think those are two, the two terms together are the problem. And if we could get it to IDIM and watershed.
Yeah, I think DNR is still a, I mean, they still have, you know, they have hydraulic engineers and they do all the flood thing permitting. Yeah, they oversee dams greater than 20 feet in height and all the other regulations they have. So I mean, DNR is, to me, it, it kind of makes sense that they would be involved with this for some of the larger reservoirs that they already regulate, but. But I do understand, I mean, Cheryl, they, IDIM is the environmental enforcement agency for water quality.
How does the enemy, the common enemy doctrine as far as surface water downstream effects relate to this legislation? And I mean, that, that was a settled court matter in 2018 and basically says that property owners have no responsibility downstream. And is this related to that at all? Or how does it relate?
Heard of Dave.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what you're referring to, Margaret, on 2018.
Well, it's, um, there's a common law doctrine about common enemies. And so let's just say somebody builds a house up on a hill and diverts the water in the water runoff to a neighbor's house downstream in order to protect his property up on the hill. Well, the person downstream has no recourse against the person upstream or the damage done to.
Of his house.
So I don't know. I mean, when, when we're looking at 25% slopes, I mean, this is very much in question.
Yeah, that, that, that coming in, the doctrine is going to run forever, so.
They reaffirmed it, I guess.
And this charges from any construction site. And you can have a site that, you know, they invest a lot of time and resources to make sure they don't have side of leak in their construction site. You didn't have, you got offenders on either side.
And also we know failures occur.
You're more likely to.
I mean, we've seen pictures that you've shown us.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's also a I, I don't know what we've resolved here yet, but just to throw more spanners in the works here, there's also something, Jackie, that you highlighted about municipalities or instead municipal corporations, instead of municipalities. Maybe Dave can talk about that, why that matters. I don't know where that is in the bill.
Yeah, so it's the drinking source of water for municipality. If we change that to.
So that's the only place it appears? Okay, all right.
So it would be under the exception.
Okay.
So I think that as much as we can, in my opinion, make this broad.
Right, drinking water is a source of drinking water for a municipal corporation.
That would be.
Municipalities cover towns and cities. Municipal corporations covers towns, cities, counties, water districts, things like that. Water corporation.
Going back to the changing this to "or", again, is there, I, I captured maybe changing Department of Natural Resources to Indiana Department of Environmental Management? Is that fair?
And then.
Changing reservoir to.
I would just delete it. So IDIM identifies watershed areas, right? I mean, I don't, I, I, I don't know.
Or I could just poke and ask more questions to the contact to say, what is, do you have a copy of that map? I mean, if you're legislating it, you need to have a copy of that map so we know what we're working with.
Are you going to ask DNR to make that determination?
Yeah.
So are you going to ask? If they, if, you know, the legislature will ask, DNR, ask them when.
Right, right.
Getting a resource or something so that they.
Which facility? Something that doesn't yet exist that DNR would have to create.
Right, okay.
But reservoirs are very specific. It is not a lake, it is a reservoir. And, and there are lakes that, yeah.
There are lakes that are not reservoirs that still have issues with sediment.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
Like Michigan?
It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be a human-built lake for it to matter. So why is that separated out here?
But he said at the beginning of the, the hearing that this was to.
This was just to keep classic prices in Monroe County. No, but, but this, these exceptions.
Any indication that that works?
No, and I asked them.
It's just about where on the lot you can build. It's not that you can't build.
Yeah.
And you've got septic, so guess what? And of course, then you've got the septic issue, right? And I think raising that plus the, the new funding required in areas that don't have a county stormwater board or stormwater manager who will then need one and the increased cost to existing stormwater departments.
That will have to be passed on.
Right, that's passed on to consumers directly. That's passed on to taxpayers, right?
Or it could be tap, increased fees.
Yes, I feel like I have a good kind of response for this, number one. And then is there a consensus to change municipality and municipal corporation? Is that okay?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Cheryl, would you have another comment or question? Here on you.
Okay. There are reservoirs, also known as ponds, on private property that people have built for their residential water supply.
Okay.
And these, these can be, could be affected by neighboring properties.
Yeah.
That was true for my, my parents.
That's interesting.
Because where the creek would fall through.
On their day, purify it.
Drew has a good question maybe Dave could address. Dave, I don't know if you can see his question up there.
Don't forget, it's just not.
Chapter 825, which establishes the eco areas in Monroe County, protects against any line disturbance activity, including vegetation removal on slopes greater than 12, 15, and 18% with the language. As it stands, preclude this additional protection.
Well, it wouldn't because it I guess right now it might up at Griffey or Lemon, but not at Lake Monroe.
There was a comment in here that we could ask them to adopt some language about how they're measuring slope to use our current language about how many feet drop in a 50-foot distance. Wouldn't that be something that we would want to address with them?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. And that would just come straight from our ordinance, which is, January 25 does have that line, so.
And who is this, who are these questions and this information? Who is this being conveyed to?
So the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce has reached out to me directly to ask if there were some amendments because they believe that the bill could use some ads and they were going to pass it on to Representative Paul.
Okay.
So I would be passing that information on to you.
Okay. We, it would be good to hear back from the chamber once they pass that on to see what else we need to do, you know? I think that would be helpful.
Okay, it would be nice to hear too, if they share with the Indiana Chamber.
Yes, that's a good point.
Because that, that's important. And, and I want to point out too that February 6th is the last day for the third reading of any Senate bill in the Senate. And so it'll be after that, that they switch their bills.
So after.
February 6th is the last day that the Senate will hear any bills that are, that were created in the Senate. So it'll be after that, that they'll switch houses. And so maybe starting on September 7th, I don't know, they'll start to assign bills to committee. Now, it could be that, that never gets signed to committee, we know that. If it's signed to committee, it could be that the chair won't ever hear it in committee. And we don't know which committee.
We don't know which committee.
Because that's part of the assigning process.
Exactly, exactly.
And now in the House, it was heard in Natural Resources, there is a comparable committee in the Senate, but we don't know. It's, it's, it's like tossing balls.
The roll call was 69 to 27. Two, other than Representative Pierce, there was another person, I believe it was Porter, but I, I can't be for sure, that spoke against it. And just both of them did reference the concern about this is, you know, this is starting a slippery slope.
Yeah, yeah.
Gave me a good fun of like, you know, you elect local leadership to enforce and create these legislation, this, this legislation. And so by having the state house and those folks don't necessarily know the county or know the jurisdiction or know the issues, having them override that in this, in this manner is scary with their constituents, so.
I have a question for Dave about the bill and you can stare at it for hours. Can you put the legislation back up? And sorry, Jackie, thank you so much. Okay. Uh, number five utilities, you know, you stare at this stuff long enough, you start asking more questions. Does that include, is septic a utility or is utility defined as a public utility? Because then this wouldn't fit with this, the state health department's slope requirements for utilities.
Yeah, that, I don't know.
For a second.
I don't know the scope of that definition.
Okay.
On that.
Good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what that.
Good question.
Well, about that. And he plant or equipment. Yeah. And owned by municipality. It has to be municipally owned, so that sewer or electrical or whatever, okay.
But what is septic?
Well, because it says "and", and it has to be, so. This, but it would not include. So the sewer or a package plant could be built on a higher slope. So it still leaves septic out, which, yeah, got it.
Be informed to clarify that though, because it's not.
I think that would need to be clarified. That's a good point. Yeah.
It's, here also, it says utility includes equipment. Is septic and equipment?
It says "and municipally owned". The first part fits for septic, but the second, because there's an "and" in there and it's a municipally owned or corporately owned utility. So that could be a package plant or it could be a so septic is out of that. And so that, so our interpretation is that utilities does not include septic. But we want verification, right? Is that your intention? Because if your intention is to upend the state health department code and administrative requirements, then we should know that and so should they.
While we're on this topic of these types of development, this doesn't jive with our code very well. We have much more. That's definition of development. So if this passes, we will be left questioning certain aspects of certain developments such as, as a parking lot exempt? Or is it subject to 15%?
Because it's total exempt.
Right. Right, so I, I wonder if we want to address or take out any of these. If it's truly about affordable housing, why is commercial building on the list?
Right.
Why is accessory structures on the list if it's about affordable housing? I would assume that means new build, new construction, not pools or sheds.
Yeah. A lot of pool on a 25% slope. I think that's just crazy to imagine.
If retaining one pool is going to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, for people that aren't sports.
So is that something that the group would like to see staff communicate to? So is that something that the group would like to see staff communicate, um, to?
There's a lack of. Yeah, I would just say there's a lack of clarity.
It doesn't cover all types of building.
But then, then the doors open, we want them to.
Well, if somebody wants to build a, a school on a twenty percent slope, do you want that to have? Great issue.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is.
Yeah.
They would then add that to the list to allow development on that. If it's not on the list, it's not on the list. I don't know.
So like your public groundways.
Right, how do you get to the house? Really long driveway.
I mean, I think from a legal standpoint, Dave, we would just deal with that situation by situation. If we got development that was not on this list, we would just address it as we normally would because it wouldn't be inclusive in the developments. That kind of how we would go about, so it would kind of further complicate our communication with the public to pull up this and then pull apart.
Yeah.
So that's how that would work.
How do you describe that?
I mean, right, it's gonna be a nightmare. I already can see it up at the front.
Yep.
Yeah, well, this part is okay, this part is not okay, well, let me look again.
And your septic has to be, and this is one site, one development.
Yeah, yeah.
Talk about adding costs to this, to the, to, adding expenses to the cost of building, we just done it. It doesn't help anybody.
It's gonna take more review.
So we will just let that, I think, lay then you don't wanna provide comment on this section B.
No, we do want to comment on that. Um, that it's not inclusive of all types of buildings and it also seems to be contrary to the goal of establishing, uh, affordable housing. That it's contrary to the stated goal and purpose of the bill and doesn't include all, uh, building types such as institutional, um. And why, and we don't understand why commercial is there when that doesn't, isn't a factor pertinent for the goal.
For affordable housing.
And it's accessory structures we burn?
Is accessory structure defined?
Well, we define it, but has the state defined it.
What, what are they going to need here?
And what do they need?
Affordable housing needs a cool initiative. I think, I think it would be good to point out when, when giving them notes about this particular section, section B, to point out again, um, the state health department's septic, uh, slope, uh, restriction.
Lee just asked, do we have a driveway ordinance?
We do.
We do.
Well, yeah.
When I was still in the planning condition, but I didn't know where to come. I immediately thought creation of new driveways, that's.
detached garage is accessory dwelling unit, a poolhouse, shed or farm. They, they, they lay out what is an accessory structure.
They do lay it out.
Yeah. Not, not in, in the state code, detached garage, accessory dwelling unit, poolhouse, shed or farm.
The poolhouse, but not a pool?
Good point. And is that cool or residual?
Are those terms, did you check to see all the terms are individually defined or I could check?
I just have.
Okay.
It's, it's got accessory dwelling unit defined, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then, um, on C, just to come back to that part, do we want to talk about asking for a different percent slope than twenty-five? Or asking for justification for the twenty-five other than the two thousand seven manual?
That says it should be avoided altogether.
Yes.
But what is, they say about the fifteen percent? What was it?
Um, I haven't, I haven't been done here with that.
So we're all in consensus up to this point, correct? I mean, anybody, anybody have any objections to anything we've, okay. Just want to make sure we're all still.
Yes.
On the same page.
Here's where this comes from, developing on slopes with a grade of fifteen percent or greater should be avoided whenever feasible in order to minimize erosion, soil loss, degradation of certain water and excessive stormwater. Furthermore, so to the greater twenty-five percent of law should be avoided altogether. This is from the, uh, item two thousand seven manual.
Will they test?
What page is that? Seventeen.
This is a chapter four to.
Page seven. Thank you.
Talked to them before.
Yes.
I said I did a good job.
Do you think that they will, are what, tweaking things behind the scenes or we just don't know?
So the state's not listening to its own advisors here.
Right.
This comes down.
I'm reading this down, Rob Hood.
Sure, that's, uh, the, when they, when Representative Hall testified for the vote on the House floor, this was the only thing that we pointed out as justification for twenty-five percent would directly ask by.
That's it, and that's exactly not what it says.
Yeah. And, and, and the, the civil engineer that came up from Bloomington, when they asked him if twenty-five percent was okay, he didn't respond. He did not give a definitive answer.
So can we, um, can we come to a consensus on a slope we're willing to accept?
Fifteen percent that may, but it's, I'm hard.
It just floated up the screen.
But. Maybe proposing a lower slope should be a second tactic.
Have we done twelve?
No, but just trying to get them to throw it all out first.
Cheryl, do you have?
They don't have it well justified.
That's true.
And then if they won't throw it out, then we offer another slope.
I'm not sure we're gonna have that opportunity to, um, to have those conversations multiple times.
Yeah.
Which is a concern. But I get your points.
Right. So in my conversation with Representative Hall, this was before the committee hearing. His main concern was that, that people be able to build, um, on slopes so that they could have walkout basements, uh, other facilities that could take advantage of a slope for, for multiple entrances. And.
That's not.
I think, uh, I tried to tell him that I thought there were, uh, zoning appeals, uh, that that helped, uh, with this. But I think if there were, um, ways to accommodate, uh, some of the interest in building uh, residences with walkout basements, uh, that would be and have that go along with, uh, a slope restriction back, back to fifteen percent. I think that would be, uh, possible for him to accept.
So, so it's really not about affordable housing, it's about a walkout basement?
And he is walkout.
As a matter of.
Well, he's already got it, so, yeah.
But that was one of, part of the argument that we heard a lot.
And, and what slope does that take?
Eighteen and a half, yeah.
I, I think he said, I think he said his was eighteen percent, eighteen or nineteen.
It's gotta be nineteen.
This was nineteen, but we heard eighteen and a half repeatedly.
Yes.
So what do y'all think?
Well, as long, nah, worst case scenario, if this goes along, um, as long as they don't prohibit our ability to define specific design standards for development on specific slopes, we will put in the work to make sure it's done well, inspect all the sites. We'll have an enforcement ordinance for road control for any new residential dwelling in the county. We'll, we'll have to put in the work, downtime will need to be increases, you know, but as long as they don't prohibit our ability to specifically define how you can do this on steeper slopes.
Okay.
Like, okay, right?
I hear that, I hear that. But if, but if we say eighteen and a half for, uh, for residential structures with a walkout basement, then that takes out driveways, utilities, commercial buildings and accessory structures. Is that what we're also?
They're all, they would still be twenty-five percent or?
No, they would, if it's, they would just be whatever the locality says. If it's, if the goal is for residential structures to have walkout basements, then you wouldn't want one on a commercial accessory structures, driveways, utilities. Right? So. Is, is that makes sense to? Okay. And we say specifically eighteen and a half percent for the purpose of developing multiple entrances, uh, multiple, um.
Multi-level.
No.
Monday, I don't know what.
Monday, it's Monday.
Well, multi-level?
Yeah, yeah, multi-level, but no, there's, I'm looking for another word, but, uh, a different, um, not. And entrances on multiple levels might work. But I'm sure that's not the best way to say it. It's escaping me right now.
Yeah, bunker mentality, just build that into a bunker.
So if I'm hearing you right, I'm sure Thomas, your comment would be to your shore up section B would include residential dwellings and then as this chain of new eighteen and a half.
Right, but it would be residential dwellings with multi-level entrances. In other words.
The, yeah.
From entrances here and then the, the walkout basement is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
But, but if that's the goal.
Right.
Um, but again, none of that speaks to affordable housing. None of this speaks to affordable housing anyway, it's all kind of a joke, but, um, in that sense, but.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know that we need to even say with multi-level, we could say residential eighteen and a half. Obviously you have to get a driveway in there, obviously you have to get utilities to the house. So clearly those are kind of givens, you don't need to add them to the list.
But you'd have to worry about the instruction of those things.
Sure, of course you would, of course you would. That's, that's the whole problem with all of this.
Yeah.
And then we have to raise our stormwater fees sooner because we've got that much more.
Or just start charging section fees to pay for.
Yeah, I think that's what we do, which is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But if.
And also enforcement, I mean, I, if we're, we have to raise the stormwater fee to both manage the professional.
So.
Review plus the enforcement.
So do we want to go eighteen and a half residential buildings only? Residential dwellings only, residential structures, that's all, residential, a dwelling is residential. Um, do we want to do that to, for start? See what happens? Is everybody okay with that?
It'd be an amendment to change, a request to amend this to say only number one. Right, two, three, four, five. And then change this to eighteen and a half percent.
Mm-hmm, to achieve the goal of the walkout basement exception.
Right, okay. But I don't think we need to mention it, is my point.
Yeah.
Any opposition to that, sending that, are you all good on that?
I'm not, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, are you okay with going with the group on?
I'm, I'm okay with going, yeah, okay, I'm not gonna.
This is a strategy.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't think there's, any of this is ideal, I think this is all just. But, okay.
Okay, so just to kind of summarize the changes that we'll be asking for. Um, I think so far we've said change this to four, but ask questions about number one, if we have this map, can we get a copy of it? And then maybe reassess. This was going to be changed to municipal corporation instead of just municipality or two. B, change development to only include number one, two, three.
Correct.
And then C, ask that this be changed to eighteen and a half percent.
Correct.
To achieve the walkout basis.
Correct. Okay.
I will draft.
Are you good with that Cheryl?
I am good with that and I wonder how these, uh, proposed changes are being communicated to Representative Hall? Is it through the chamber only?
Um, my idea would be that I would, um, email the chamber and CC Representative Hall, I think that would be effective.
Can you also send it to our lobbyists?
Yeah.
Yes.
And to Matt Pierce.
Yes. Kelly Oder, Matt Pierce, uh, Rick Cochran, Patrick Tam.
Cook, you know, and.
Yeah, and.
You should have a, a, a copy of that as well and Peggy Mayfield.
Who are all the, who are all the, um, the, the, all the, all the folks who are on, who are signed on, right?
Representative Hall was the primary author rather than Chris May.
Oh, Chris May, okay.
Shane Lindauer, who was the chair of the natural resources committee and now Eric.
Eric, okay.
Yeah, sorry, I said.
Yeah.
So all the bills, uh, just send that to them.
Okay.
Would you want to copy the, uh, plan commission?
Yes.
This is a long email, yeah, a long BCC list here.
To represent.
And it'll be longer than the message.
Like Maggie Mayfield, even though she's not an author of the bill, I think.
But, but it's finished in.
It's, it's going to Senate, Senate, Senate.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Can I add, Nancy, I wasn't sure if we were gonna include how to define slope.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
No, we're gonna take chapter eighty-two, definition, the fifty-foot.
Yes.
And that'll get included in the text.
That, well, that's what I asked for it. Okay. Sorry you're not, no, are you okay?
Yes.
Yeah, it's been over a week, but I'm still having like fatigue, so.
So sorry. Ah, nice, we won't make too much loud noise.
I also want to mention that, um, when I spoke to, um, those on the Indiana APA, uh, board, that they shared this message to all the other planners or something. Um, someone from a private, uh, group stated that a couple of communities in Southern Indiana have self-regulations that kick in at twenty-five percent. With regards to House Bill eleven oh eight, the latest amendment says that development can't be denied exclusively on slope should give us back some regulatory control at the local level. For example, if someone's proposing development on a slope between fifteen to twenty-five percent, you could mandate, mandate certain studies, construction design, construction methods be employed before removals could occur. This way you're not prohibiting development on steeper slopes, but you are stipulating how it must occur. So I think from a.
Yeah.
Perspective, they spoke about that.
Yeah, and it says based on slope only in the bill, so that's, that's.
Right.
Yep, so that there could, there are other things that we also consider with planning and zoning.
And you're not necessarily saying, no, it can't occur altogether. What you're saying is that it, it has to occur in these ways and there could be enforcement potential.
One of the things that I, I wish I had said in, in the, the column that, that I, I did is that climate scientists anticipate that there are going to be more severe weather occurrences. And so that's gonna mean heavier rainfalls at times, which will lead to more runoff and rattle. And that's not, you know, we should be, we should be tightening up, not loosening our frictional points things. And, and I, I think it would be important to, to share some of that. I mean, I can, I can share that with, with Shelley, I can share that with others, but I, I just, I, we're, we're ignoring what the future may look like.
Yeah. I mean, but Southern California had two thousand year rains in, in a two week time span.
And, and what happened?
Yeah.
Yeah. Places washed into.
Had a lot of erosion, even my property, just a.
Oh, I've, I've lost so many trees on my creek, it's not even.
I've lost over a hundred.
And there hasn't. And there hasn't been any development on my creek. There's, it's my whole creek, nobody's built a house. But now I've got trees just falling left, right, because of erosion on the hillside. And the creek is swelling to wider um, sizes when, when we get the, the runoff that we get.
You can't get.
Because it comes faster. The rain may be the same, but it comes faster and.
Yeah, exactly, that's.
Yeah, I've got so many trees down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, essentially, um, we are in discussions on our new storm warning ordinance. I have a deadline on July first to pass it, that's according to the state. Um, so this spring, we will be seeing a new storm warning management ordinance for the county. And I think it's worth a discussion to see what considerations we should put into that ordinance if, if this bill passes.
Yeah.
And we'll have time to know if this bill passes or not before it passes.
So that's going before the stormwater board and then the.
Yes.
Great, yeah, the, the last date for the, anything in occurring in legislature this year is May, March fourteenth.
Great. Okay. And some statement I've been in my mind that I haven't come up yet is Javica stated in her testimony that in your ordinance, you can allow development on steeper slopes if there's otherwise no other buildable area on the lot.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
Within the ego.
No, there's an administrative waiver under the county law.
Maybe we need to look at that again.
Yeah, we need to.
Take that. I mean, we might need to look at it, but she also told them that, that exceptions had been, had been granted also.
Um, yeah, yeah, ninety percent.
Basically.
I heard that DZ is a pushover, is it true?
Well, they can do a stormwater plan.
I'm not asking, I'm just commenting, it's quasi judicial and not.
This was added. Lots of record which cannot be reasonably utilized for its own uses result of wear and regarding slopes of fifteen percent or greater. An administrative waiver may be granted for the construction of a single family residential, you know. The waiver shall be only granted to the extent necessary to instruct the state.
So this is already our ordinance and all we're doing is telling the state what our ordinance is.
We did.
We try it.
Yeah, she did.
But they're adding commercial, other properties now to.
They also did hear her say that this is, that oftentimes it was people who had buildable area that was less than fifteen and they were asking.
They were asking to move the.
To move to the top of the hill, basically.
Yeah, to build the house somewhere else.
Yeah.
And if we had the soils, this would be a different discussion.
Thanks.
You know, we just don't have the natural infrastructure.
We don't have the right dirt.
Right. I can't tell you how many times, every time we, every time we talk about slope, I get pictures of it also. So built this house on a canyon in California and it's still there. It's been too sick of, okay, well, we don't have California soils and you know, I always get those.
Do you guys remember that commercial from Sears Roebuck way back in the day? Where the guy gets out of the car engine, he crawls out and he's just covered with dirt and he says, I'm dirt, I'm dirt, I'm greasy grimy dirt. And the, the, um, advertisement was for an oil additive to keep your engine green. Do you remember that? Do you remember that thing?
He's too young, I can wait.
I know. Call my brother dirt. We used to call my brother dirt because.
Is that the geologist?
We did call one of them dirt because of that.
All right.
All right, well, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you for leading on this.
Yeah, thanks Jackie, appreciate it, the consensus.
Feels good to go forward with everyone on the same page.
Yep.
So.
Oh, you did. We don't need that, okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks Cheryl, good seeing you.
Have a good day.
Yes, bye.